If you have not done so already, please sign in on the attendance sheet and allow us to verify that you have a right to vote. Any registered voter of the township has the right to vote on matters at this annual meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:01 or 2:00?
2:00.
2:00 P.M. Vera, can you lead us in the pledge allegiance? Can everybody stand, please?
Hi. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask for an election of a moderator. The moderator of this meeting is elected from the electors present. It is customary to award an honorarium to the moderator of the annual town meeting. What is your pleasure regarding an honorarium?
I make the motion that we have an honorarium for the moderator at $100.
Second. There's a motion on the floor for honorarium by Michael Dropka for $100, seconded by Mary Rapp Clark. A call to call a vote. You want to raise ayes?
Aye.
Ayes? Nays? Motion carried. Are there any nominations for moderator of the 149th Annual Meeting of the Township of Riverside?
I make the motion that we select Adam Wilt as moderator. I'll second it.
There's a motion on the floor by Michael Dropka to nominate Adam Wilt as the moderator, seconded by Tim Hollenbach. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, that's motion is passed. Adam, would you like to come up and take the alt, please? Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will fulfill
that I will fulfill
and impartially discharge the duties
and impartially discharge the duties
of the moderator of this township meeting
of as the moderator of this township meeting
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Do you have the script?
Yeah. Okay. At this time, we will begin with by entertaining a motion to approve the minutes of the last annual township meeting. The minutes of the 140th Annual Meeting are available at the table in the back. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
I'm going to vote.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Are there any, is there any discussion? Yes.
Your address.
That's correct. My address is Riverside, Naprockfield, for the minutes. Are there any other corrections or discussion? Seeing no more discussion, I will call for the approval of the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, minutes are approved with corrections. Is there any new business to come before the electors? Items would need to have been placed on the agenda in advance. I do not see any. Is that correct? Okay. We will move on to the reports of the officers. We will begin with the financial statement of the supervisor read by the township clerk.
Township of Riverside is in sound financial condition. There are no debts due or unpaid at this date. Town fund, as of close of business as of March 31st, 2019, the sum of the general fund account was $821,243.11. Revenues were $584,742.51. Expenses were $612,316.12. The decrease was $27,573.61. Amount of tax levied in the preceding year was $545,643. The general assistance fund, as of close of business as of March 31st, 2019, the sum of the general assistance fund account was $320,485.29. Revenues were $67,859. Expenses were $28,393.69, an increase of $39,465.31. Amount of tax levied in the preceding year was $65,680. Supervisor's annual accounting financial statement for Riverside Township, Cook County, for the period April 1st, 2018 through March 31st, 2019, made by Vera A. Wilt, Supervisor. The town fund, amount of public funds on hand, April 1st, 2018, were $854,139.70. Receipts, real estate tax collective was $539,963.96. Personal property replacement tax was $30,362.35. Other revenues was $4,494. Food pantry donations was $6,043.10. And interest was $3,0879.10. The net receipts was $584,742.51. Total receipts and opening balance was $1,438,882.21. Disbursements, salaries, $256,550.61. Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, $23,092.33. Taxes, FICA, Medicare, unemployment, $22,921.12. Hospitalization, life insurance, $16,827.50. Administration, $6,738.42. Annual audit was $8,250. Accounting and payroll service was $27,593.23. Building and equipment maintenance was $18,849.24. Education seminars and dues was $2,009.48.20. Insurance, general and liability was $27,444. Legal services were $2,470. Supplies and equipment, $8,141.16. Telephone and utilities, $12,055.693. Travel expense, $2,052.84. Website development, $12,056. Food pantry, $4,030.06. Programs and grants, $113,555.54. Assessor's office budget, $48,715. Road and maintenance expense, $694.30. Bridge maintenance and expense, $1,028.62. Net disbursements, $617,639.10. Closing balance as of March 31st, 2019, $8,021,243.11. Riverside Bank now account, $108,943. Riverside Bank money market account, $537,250.33. Riverside Bank food pantry account, $7,065.61. Riverside Bank certificate of deposit, $65,602.17. Riverside Bank certificate of deposit, $102,381.89. Total bank balance as of March 31st, 2019, $821,243.11. This is Vera Wilt, Supervisor of Riverside Township, Cook County, Illinois. Julie Swan, dispose and say the foregoing statement is correct. Report of the financial year beginning April 1st, 2018 and ending March 31st, 2019, this fourth day of April, 2019. Signed by Vera A. Wilt, Supervisor.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the financial statement of the supervisor.
So.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A second. Is there any discussion? All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Statement is approved. The next item of business will be the report of the township supervisor.
Thank you. You all have it in writing. I don't know that I need to address it word for word. However, I would like to say that it's been a pleasure to serve this past year with a board that is dynamic and always looking to make a difference for the residents of this township. Some of the projects that we've undertaken, I'm happy to report that as of this evening, the Wi-Fi in the public rooms in this building is working. And so where we had very low signal, that has been improved. This room has been acoustically modified so that there's a little bit less of an echo. I think the TV crew is happy with that. Upcoming projects include similar approach, not using the same kinds of sound panels, but we're looking to make some acoustical improvements in the auditorium. And the whole building needs some good cosmetic TLC, basically some painting, some plaster repairs and so forth. And we are planning for some bigger projects, including the painting of the swinging bridge. And ultimately, within the next couple of years, a roof for this building. There are some tuck point issues and other such things as well. We have been focusing on service to the residents and the best utilization of the town's major asset, which is this building. So that has meant that besides providing meeting space to many of the community organizations, we also have set guidelines for non-stentum use of the building for private parties and as well as for nonprofit fundraisers. And that has begun to kick in, and I think that those who are utilizing the building are pleased to be able to use this major asset of the township. We have several events coming up in the near future for families and organizations for this special use. It should be noted that anytime alcohol is served, it requires, in some cases, if it's a public event, it requires the cooperation of the village and application for permission to do so, as well as insurance that also covers the township. The, I think, the township newsletter has made a splash. We have so far been publishing twice per year, and it's an eye-catching informational vehicle, which we can attest to the fact that right after it comes out, certain of our services take an uptick. So we also did a postcard to the senior citizens in the township, which increased the utilization of some of those special services. So we have events such as the exercise classes that are held Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays in this building at noon. They are free to the public, and we have seen an increase in utilization thanks to the postcards that went out. We now have been getting around 18 to 20 people each day. So that's, that's great utilization here, and it's great for the health of our residents. It is not exclusively for senior citizens, however, being at noon on a weekday, that's who usually takes advantage of it. We recently launched a new website. That's www.riversitetownship.org. It is easier to access than when we went through the township officials of Illinois, and we're trying to make it very pleasing, eye-catching, and that will see improvements over the coming months as well. Many organizations have received grants in the past year. Those grants are awarded at four meetings per year, February, May, August, and November. And various community organizations, as well as special needs, of course responders and other such things, are often awarded grants for their continued support of the community. These are things that are better done by nonprofit organizations often than by government itself, so we are pleased to partner with them for that service to the township residents. We are in the early stages of planning for a celebration next year of the sesquicentennial, that's 150 years of the founding of this township. So we hope to have a lot of events or a lot of recognition of that service, as well as celebrating 125 years of the service of this building itself. Again, it's my privilege to serve, and thank you for your trust and tolerance.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to accept the report of the township supervisor.
I make the motion that we accept the supervisor's report.
There is a motion and a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Report is approved. We'll now move to the report of the township clerk.
Basically, what my report consists of is complimenting the board on their talents and the strengths that they bring to the board. And from my perspective, you can read the report yourself, and I just, you know, I'm amazed that they're very talented people, and they have accomplished great things on the board. The other thing that I would like to thank is the staff that represents our office, Marjorie, who is my deputy clerk, and Andrew, who works in our office, and they work tirelessly for all of us. The other thing that is a major strong point for the board is the fabulous work that our assessor, Frances Zitkowitz, does for us. Everybody compliments her. She's, she's all that and everything else. And lastly, to be part of this board. Thank you.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to accept the report of the township clerk.
I see.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Report is approved. This time, I will call upon the assessor for the report of the township assessor.
Thank you, everyone. I particularly like to thank Supervisor Wilt and the township board for their continued support of the services which we provide to our township residents from my office. So I just want to go through some of the data that my office collects that helps us determine how to better serve the constituents of Riverside Township. So we, we keep data on the, some of the major responsibilities that we assist with getting information to the Cook County Assessor's Office, and that includes exemptions, we process permits, we process certificates of error, we help residents with appeals, and we do keep track of property transfers within the township. So as far as exemptions are concerned, we processed 441 exemptions last year. It's pretty similar to what we processed in the previous year. And that includes homeowner seniors, senior freeze, disabled homeowner and disabled veterans exemptions. We processed 1,378 permits that amounted to $22,975,794. That is the one responsibility that is statutorily required of my office. We contacted 544 senior residents to make sure that they receive their, or return their senior citizen exemption applications. It's very important to my office that the seniors do not receive any surprises when that second installment property tax bill comes out. We want to make sure everyone has their exemptions in on time. Certificates of error, corrected tax bills. We assisted 150 residents receive refunds of $166,431 through the certificate of error process. So anyone who has discovered that they didn't apply for their exemptions on time, they can go back up to three years and receive a refund from the Cook County Assessor's Office so that they can get those exemptions, which they qualified for. Let's see, we assisted 38 residents receive a corrected tax bill before the second installment was due, so they didn't have to pay a higher tax amount because they forgot to apply for their exemptions. So 2018 was also the second year of our triennial. So we assisted 320 taxpayers with appeals to the assessor's office and 546 taxpayers with appeals to the Board of Review. When the appeal period comes along for each of those offices, we have 30-day window to file an appeal or assist our taxpayers to file appeals. So that gives us about 20 working days. So it is crunch time when we're helping that many, many people who are coming into the office. They're emailing us, they're calling us. So it's quite busy around here at that time. And then, property transfers. Due to some inconsistent data, we've been working out with the assessor's office, we were only able to track property transfer information for the first three quarters of last year. We don't have the final quarter yet. So up until about August or September 1st, we did track 200 residential property transfers through all the villages that amounted to $70,646,665. We had about 15 condo transfers of $2,677,650, and eight commercial transfers amounting to $9,166,340. I would like to call attention to the commercial property transfers. They were unusually large for this last year. And also, one thing of particular note is that the medical professional building on the corner of Ogden and Harlem did transfer from McNeil to Loyola, and Loyola is a tax-exempt body. So that property will be coming off the tax rolls. That was a pretty significant equalized assessed value for our township. So that will probably be coming off the tax rolls this year in 2019. We continue to bring as much information out to the taxpayer as possible. We conducted two seminars last year, one in August with the Cook County Board of Review, and then I conducted another seminar in October that was mostly geared toward new homeowners, but of course, everyone is welcome, and both of those seminars were well-attended. We consistently reach out through email to alert our constituents when they need to file appeals, when they need to pay attention to any kind of property tax information, when they should watch for the property tax bills, and also, you know, to invite them to our seminars. And we grew our list last year from 869 contacts to 956 contacts. We sent out nine campaigns. So we're really busy all year long, just reaching out, providing information, and then at crunch time with appeals and exemptions. So it's, we're, our office is very busy these days. Some new developments that occurred last year is we do have a new Cook County Assessor, and I am on the Cook County Township Assessors Association. We've worked very closely with Fritz Kegy and his staff to try and make sure things transitioned as smooth as possible. Something also new that, that has been occurring last year is the Cook County Treasurer's Office, Maria Pabas. She certainly understands the valuable resources in the township assessors, and she's reached out to us to help her, to help her contact taxpayers who have delinquent property taxes or who might have had missing exemptions for a couple of years. So she's been really using our resources to try and help the residents overcome these issues with their property taxes. And we've also determined a way to help streamline some processes by working with the treasurer's office. So now the township assessors can access the treasurer's office database to help her maintain an updated list, so when people have the wrong address on their property taxes, we could do it right from the treasurer, right from our offices now, instead of everyone having to go through the treasurer's office. So we're really working on streamlining things with the treasurer's office as well. So finally, I would just like to thank my staff, Mary Jo Miller and Barb Ligan, for their continued professionalism that they bring to the office every day. They are true public servants in every, every sense of the word. So thank you very much. That is my report for 2018. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I will call for a motion to accept the report of the township assessor.
So.
A motion and a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Fran, do you have any quantification on what the effect will be on when we look at the acquisition by the county church?
Um, the law's pretty much already, yeah, it has really been impacted by the 2017 amendment, I'd say. It wasn't a huge impact. The, the building that State Mary bought, I'm not sure what the AB is on the, um, I believe $560,080. So it wasn't a big impact. In terms of property taxes, you know, it wasn't a big impact.
Is there any, is there any other discussion?
I just want to thank Fran and her staff for doing such a fabulous job, and I can give you a walking testimonial. They got my taxes reduced by $3,000.
Wonderful.
Thanks, Fran.
Madam Clerk, have you been able to, do you have all the names for the discussion or questions? Were you able to get all the names of everybody?
No.
Okay. All right. Would, would I be able to ask?
Oh, I have.
Okay, got it. Okay, never mind. Just want to, just clarify, if I could ask everyone, please identify yourself when you, when you do participate in the discussion, when you begin the discussion. I failed to mention that, so thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Report is approved. I will now call for the report of the mental health board.
I'm coming.
Sounds good.
I'm listening.
Thank you.
The report of the mental health board is in your packet, and we're going to forego the wordy first page. And you can read that at your leisure if you want to know how the mental health board came into existence. We're going to get down to the bones of the thing, which is page two. What are we doing with the township's money? We're spending it for the benefit of the township and assisting the mental health, the, of the residents of Riverside Township. To do that, we contract with agencies who are professionals in their particular area, and those services then are provided to Riverside Township. In many cases, it's free. If you happen to be fortunate to have insurance, these agencies will be more than happy to file for you on your insurance policy. The first I'd like to mention is Pillars Community Health. That organization you may have heard includes Constance Morris House for That organization you may have heard, uh, includes, uh, Constance Morris House for, uh, protection, protection of women who have been abused and their families. Uh, we do not directly support that component because it's not in our charter, but it shows you the depth that, uh, Pillars does have. Pillars provides mental health support for, uh, Riverside Township. Uh, and in doing that, they provide a counselor, a clinician, to, uh, be on residence at Oak Park High, uh, Oak Park, at Riverside Township High School. And, uh, they're dealing now with, uh, quite a few people. Uh, we like Pillars doing this work because, uh, during the summer, most people take off and don't show up at the school. The kids are not showing up at school. Since Pillars is a well-rounded community organization with offices, uh, in the area, uh, they're able to refer, the, the high school, uh, uh, clinician is able to, uh, refer people into a summer program, and they can continue on, uh, with the associated help, uh, that that student needs throughout the year. Pillars recently, uh, has merged with, uh, the Compu- Compuity Nurses, uh, which gives them additional strength, because, as you know, many, many people recl- reply, or require assistance from Medicaid. Through the, uh, Community Nursing Program, uh, the, uh, nurse practitioners can, uh, modify and, uh, diagnose and write prescriptions for tricot- psychotropic drugs, which is a big help, rather than requiring the person on, uh, Community, uh, on Medicaid to, uh, wait three months until they're able to see a Medicaid-approved, uh, psychiatrist or psychologist, uh, for their monitoring of their, their drugs. Helping Hands is an organization which we have under contract for providing help to the developmentally disabled. They have, uh, several, uh, SILAs, which are Community Integrated Living Arrangements, which is supported by the State of Illinois, uh, and usually will, uh, supervise and house up to eight people. Six to eight people is the norm, and those are scattered around, uh, the township, uh, as well as elsewhere. Helping Hands also, uh, does a, uh, classroom work for Alzheimer's, and that is becoming, uh, a lot more, uh, utilized by the community. Uh, they can go to their, one of their centers in Countryside, and, uh, they work in a classroom environment, and it's pretty much on a one-on-one basis, uh, with the, uh, uh, client and with a, uh, professional caregiver. Uh, Community Support Services is located in Brookfield, and they provide respite service and classroom instruction. Uh, we have provided scholarships, uh, to people in Riverside Township to take some of these classes, uh, which would be art classes, cooking classes, et cetera, for, uh, the developmentally disabled. U C P Segwin, uh, the name is, uh, United Serple Policy, uh, has joined up with Segwin in Cicero, uh, to provide a broader range of services. They have a, a lot of, uh, these community, uh, uh, integrated health facilities, uh, taking care of, uh, several hundred, uh, clients, uh, in these houses that are all supervised. Help, and the supervisors will help, call upon people to get them to their jobs, because people like Segwins and Helping Hands do have placement facilities. Uh, they have, uh, trained people going out into the community, uh, looking for employment opportunities, and they will then go on, uh, to the employer with the client and to help them indoctrinate into the, the workspace. Way back in is, uh, someone who we have recently, uh, negotiated with to provide help to Riverside Township residents for gambling addictions, substance abuse addictions, uh, chemical addictions. Uh, they are located in several places. They have a facility in Oak Park and one in Maywood that I'm familiar with. Aging Care Connections. Aging Care Connections is, um, been around for a long time, services over thirteen communities, uh, enclosed in five different townships. Uh, they provide, uh, help for, uh, despondency, uh, adult problems, senior citizen problems, dementia, et cetera. Uh, they have lots of experience, and they have a unique, uh, counseling, uh, and supervisory capacity, and that's why we have chosen them to, uh, monitor, to, to coordinate, to implement, uh, the, uh, and manage the new, uh, community, uh, uh, person who is going to be here at the township, and we certainly appro- appreciate the efforts of the Riverside Township Board in gaining, giving us access to the building, uh, so that, uh, this, uh, clinician can be available to Riverside Township residents when they come into town. Now, what is this, uh, clinician going to be doing, uh, here in the township? When we did a needs, a community needs assess, assessment, we find that we've got to do more than just have the facilities of these agencies available to township residents. We need to direct people to these agencies so that they can avail themselves of the service. If a township resident comes to the township and wants to see this, uh, clinician, uh, that clinician can hear what their problems are, diagnose what their needs are, and direct them, uh, even make reservations for them at, uh, the appropriate venue, uh, whether it be, uh, you know, a developmentally disabled situation, mental health, alcohol, substance abuse, et cetera. We're currently, we've, we've issued some funds to this organization to start. The organization, uh, is being implemented as we speak. Uh, it has to, it'll probably be online and available to residents probably by the early summer. Uh, West Suburban Special Recreation Association is, uh, an organization which we have recently started supporting, and what we do there is, their, their recreation programs for developmentally disabled, uh, is not free. There is a, a payment, uh, necessary. Rather than having the, uh, the parents, uh, take on the entire hundred percent of the, uh, the fees that are associated with these recapartment, uh, opportunities, uh, the Riverside Township Mental Health Board has, uh, agreed to pay fifty percent of those. We don't get, we don't reimburse the, uh, the client who is using the facilities, but that, uh, the West Suburban, uh, Special, uh, Recreation Association submits a bill to the Mental Health Board for reimbursement of the fifty percent of the, uh, fees that they have waived to the participant. An organization which I neglected to, uh, include is NAMI, which stands for the National Alliance on Mental Illness. They have provided and are providing on a continuing basis, uh, first responder education, uh, in the needs of, uh, mental health. Uh, they run into situations, the police department and the fire department, where they're, they may run into somebody who is acting out at a shopping center, at a store, walking along the Burlington tracks. They are being educated, uh, by NAMI, uh, on how to diagnose and what actions to take. Uh, they are doing this in many communication, many communities around the area. Uh, so the total community grants and aid that we have provided last year was, uh, five hundred and eighty thousand eight hundred dollars worth of grants and aid. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Okay. I will entertain a motion to accept the report of the Riverside Township Mental Health Board. There's a motion, and then there's a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Mental Ho- the Mental Health Board report is approved. The last item of business I have, um, on the agenda is to set the date for the next Township Annual Meeting, and by statute, that, the date is the second Tuesday in April, which would be April seventh, two thousand and twenty. Oh, you're right. That's it. Correct. So, that will be the fourteenth. The statute also dictates that the meeting should not begin before six P M. Uh, do I have a motion to set the date and time for the next Township Annual Meeting?
I move that we set the date and time for the next annual town meeting for the second Tuesday in April, which is April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, at the hour of six oh one.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
We have a second by, by Kadrapka. Is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, the one hundred and fiftieth Annual Meeting of Riverside Township will take place on Tuesday, April fourteenth, at six oh one P M, and that is the end of our agenda, so I will entertain a motion at this time to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Second? Aye. Marjorie? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.